I'm opening the work session. And again, a reminder, perennial reminder to check the signature file. We'll have a few more items to sign as well after this evening. And first order that we're gonna hit is a quest for waiver of interest on tax liens.
And one, well, it is tax liens because this property has tax liens on it from 2014 to date. And really should be up for being tax deeded, but a person that has purchased property in Plymouth not too long ago, asked if there was any property up for tax lien, and I told her about this one property. So she went. The person that owns the property is no longer living in the house. And so her uncles have taken, taken it over. And so I did speak with one of the uncles and I told her about it. So she spoke with him. She made an offer to him for the property and he accepted her offer. Initially, when I got this letter asking, asking for really for a waiver of taxes, he wanted all of the, he wanted all of the interests. Sorry, a waiver of interest. He wanted all of the interest from 2014 forward. And my suggestion was going to be to the board to waive one year because we don't, we don't really go backwards. So I was going to suggest waiving one year, but in the meantime, this woman came forward, wants to buy it, got a purchase and sale agreement. She said the property is not in very good shape, so I had the assessor go out and look at it. And when the assessor came back, she did depreciate the house because it's not in good shape. She said it's got good bones, but it's, it's not worth the value that was on it. So instead of waiving the interest, she would get an abatement on 2020's taxes of $1,300. So that would come off the liens, what they owe for the lien. The liens are almost $30,000 that they owe us. They owe the town. And about $9,000 of that is the interest. So I don't know if the board, you know, if the board has any, just wants to go along with the abatement or if you have any questions or thoughts on the subject.
I have a question. What, what's the house assessed at?
It was assessed at 119, but when the assessor came back, the house itself is assessed at 40,000 now. The property, the, the whole property with the land is 73,000 now, after the adjustment was made. And the ladies, they still own it. We haven't taken it. If we were to take it, they would owe us about $42,000 to get it back. Because there's 30,000, almost 30,000 in tax liens and interest. And then there'd be like, you know, attorney fees and the incidentals that you can charge, you know, there's various things that you can charge to it. So they would have owed us 42,000 to get it back. So for, for her to want to give him money and buy it from him, he's going to have to pay off the taxes once he gets the money. And it'll be, I mean, then it'll be back on the tax rolls and she will, she will just, you know, take care of it, totally gut it and fix it up and probably just turn around and resell it because that's what she does. So.
What is she selling it at, do you know?
I, I don't know because she hasn't, she's buying it for 42.5. And then she has to, she has to gut it because it's got good bones, the assessor said, so it would be worth her gutting it and fixing it up. And then she can put it back on the market. It's got just over an acre of land. It is next door to a junkyard that needs to be dealt with. Yeah, I don't know what she would ask for, for the price.
That's the one that's next to the Pattersons.
Yes. Yeah. And we did Google Maps or whatever, you know, where you can look down on the property and you can see what the house next door looks like. And you can see the cars and the junk all around it. She wants to put a fence up so she doesn't have to look at it. It's fine, but.
Have there been any other offers on the property?
That's not.
She has a PNS, huh?
Yes, we have a purchase and sale from her. I mean, he actually, the, the uncle of the girl that lived there says that he had three different offers, but each one of them pulled out. So this is the only person that has stuck with, you know, a purchase and sale agreement. And she's got the financing and they're supposed to close this week. So you know, we don't own it. So whatever, he decides it's up to him and her. As long as we get paid, we don't care what, you know, we don't care who buys it.
What, what do you think a realistic number is?
I, I think that the 40s is a, is a, I mean, the, the land, let me see. The land itself is worth just about that much. The land itself is worth 30, is valued at 35,000. So it's pretty close. You know, so they've got that, she's got the house, which would be the, if she guts it, she's got the shell. So that's worth more than, you know, the, the 7,000 that would bring it up to the 42.
The cost of rehabbing a house has gone up substantially.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not surprised. I heard materials are very hard to come by.
They've tripled.
Expensive, yeah. But that's up to her, you know, she wants to do that.
Anyone, anyone's thoughts on?
I tend to agree with Kathy's recommendation that we just debate taxes for one year.
Yeah.
Yeah. If she's gonna gut the place, I don't know, the, the profit there would certainly cover what she owes plus some. So I'm with the $1,300 off as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Do you need a motion, Kathy?
What would the balance be that she owes the town?
The total owed to the town right now is $29,316. So she would, they would have, she purchases the property. The previous owner would have to pay off those, the tax liens and the interest. And then he would get the balance of whatever's left. So it's almost 30,000. She's giving him 42.5. He'd get like 12, $13,000. Well, with the abatement, that would be about 15,000 that he would get. So if we were to take the, like I said, if we were to take the property, they'd owe us like $42,000. So.
Okay. If you think that, you think it's workable?
Yeah. Yep.
I'd go along with it.
Okay. Good. And I can give you this. I mean, I sent her a couple of letters trying to make payment, you know, get her to make payment arrangements with the tax collector. And at one point she started to make payments, but then she stopped. So that's been like six years now that she hasn't paid anything. So. And we're not in the real estate business.
Sure we are.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people that are really on the edge now.
Yeah.
True. Okay. So I guess discussion regarding the 20, you know, 2021 warrant and virtual public health, uh, public health, public hearing discussion.
That would be Ian. Warrant articles and.
So we, Kathy and I just briefly went through each warrant article that's coming up for the public hearing on Saturday, the 26th, 27th, I'm sorry. Of course, that'll be virtual at one o'clock. Hoping that everybody is planning on being there. Anything that you saw in yellow is what we've added for the board to, so the warrant article, as I understand the procedure, the warrant article will be read by the moderator. And then my hope was for the yellow, just to allow the board to read through that and add anything else that you wanted to. I'm trying to make this public hearing as smooth as we can. And what we tried to think of is potentially what questions have always been asked over the last few years that we've been at town meeting. So that's where those, that information came from. There's some articles that we could start right at article two. So if article two does not pass, and the board should be aware that the remainder of the articles in the warrant will not pass as well. So I did put in there in hopes that the board would say something along the lines of, we encourage you to pass this article for this year, which will assist us in the remainder of the articles. Article three, I did talk to Neil and he kind of reviewed what we were putting in here in the yellow and thought that was just a good synopsis of what was going on. Article four, it's important that the voters know that it is up to the selectmen to take roads now. So after the second public hearing in March, before you finish the warrant for the voters, there's language at the very bottom there that says what the new warrant article should read. And that was recommended by John Ratigan. Article five, I went to the conservation commission and got some information from them as to how they would like to see that article presented. I've been got there. Article six. Basically what we've done at the recommendation of the attorney was try to, and the moderator also was try to reduce the number of articles. So you'll see several articles in here that weren't all in the same article in prior years where they are now. Seven and eight are both union articles related. Nine and 10 and 11 all kind of go together, all related to the police department.
Why, why did we decide to separate the three for the police department, but none of the ones for the town?
Article nine, we're actually taking a withdrawal of 30,000 from the special detail fund. So you have to have a separate warrant article for that. That's why that one is separate.
Okay.
Article 10 is the same thing. We're taking money from the special revenue for the parking. Again, we have to use a special for that. In article 11, we're receiving special, we're recognizing special money coming from the school for that. So that's why that one has to be separate as well, Zach.
Okay. Yep.
Article 12 was fire and ambulance. 13 is highway. 14, we talked about Bartlett Road, the information that was presented and we talked to Joe about that. And it is 900 feet of roadway. So.
So that one, we have listed the board of sec, board of selectmen recommend passage of this article. I'm not sure if that's true on article 14.
There was a motion by the board to put it in the budget.
Well, it was a motion by the board to put it on as an article for the town to choose, but I don't know is, at least from my perspective, I wasn't necessarily endorsing that as something that we, the town should do. I don't know if the other board members felt differently, but.
Zach, because it is a money article.
Because it's a money article, we have to put a recommendation on there. And with the board putting that on the warrant, it has to have a recommendation.
Why does it have to have a recommendation?
New Hampshire requires recommendations on money articles.
Requires that the select board recommend or not rec, like, so could, here's a question. Could we vote to not recommend that article?
You could, but that really wouldn't make a lot of sense. Why would you even put it on there if you didn't recommend it?
In my opinion, in my opinion, we put it on the, on, on the warrant because we were going to vote against it and close that road, but we wanted to give the town the option to disagree with us.
But you as a, as you as a group collectively said, we want to put it on the warrant, therefore we, as your financial people, understood that that meant that you're recommending it go forward. There wasn't anything else that would make it be on the warrant because it wasn't petitioned? This was something that the board chose to do?
Yes, we, we chose to do it, but my understanding is we chose to do it to give the town an opportunity to disagree with us about that road.
I kind of, I kind of corroborate that too. You know, we all saw the value of it, but we realized that.
It's a very expensive choice to make.
Yeah.
But it's the same as putting a recommendation on any of your other departments when it is a special financial warrant article.
Difference.
Have to have.
The difference is that I, I think we do recommend the other, other articles. Again, I, I, I'm speaking for myself and not the rest of the board, but I personally, I don't recommend this article. I think that the town should have it as a choice. I believe that while we may have the authority to open or close roads, closing a road in this town is something that, that, that the town should have an opportunity to, to weigh in on. So I feel like we should put it to the town. We shouldn't just make that decision. But I, I would recommend we close the road and not fund this.
All right. You, you could read that one.
I, I'm not arguing with you, Zach, but what I'm saying is that the reason that it is on here is because it came from the selectmen to put it on it during one of the.
I, I believe that I actually motioned it on, which is why I'm making, making a, a point of this. Do the other select board members? I mean, it, this is a document that says that the rest of you recommend the passage of this article. Is that true? Do the rest of you recommend the passage of this article?
Well.
Mary Ann, it seemed like you're gonna speak.
I, I get what Zach is saying. But I also would support, I would also support this, this article. I'm sure that doesn't help.
Well, I will support anything the town votes for.
Zach, what you're, what you're getting at, I think what maybe we should have done and is we should have put an extra 125,000 into the budget for highway roads. And not put it out there. If you're not going to recommend it, you shouldn't make it a separate warrant article.
I see. I, I fully disagree with you, Ann. I, I think that there are times that we have to ask the town what they think about a particular piece of infrastructure in this town. We had a long debate and a long conversation about Bartlett Road. And as a board, we all sort of came to the conclusion that it was a very expensive road for us to maintain in this town. So expensive that we weren't necessarily going to recommend that Joe put any more effort into this road. And when that reached an impasse, he said, well, then what do you want me to do? Close the road? And we said, well, maybe, but let's let the town make that decision and not us.
So is that doable, Ann, or, or against the quote unquote rules?
I will call DRA directly tomorrow morning and get an answer.
Okay.
So that you'll have an answer prior to the public hearing.
I mean, again, if anybody on the board disagrees with, with my recollection of that conversation, I'm, I'm always open to have remembered wrong.
Neil or John?
I, I, I didn't think, I was ambivalent. I thought the voters should decide it. I, I didn't want to try to steer it one way or the other. If, if Ian calls up DRA and gets an opinion, then we'll have to go with that. But I, I think it should be on the ballot.
Yeah, I, I guess they'll throw it at DRA and see.
Did not the fire department and police department say that they traveled that road?
Yeah.
Yes. So for
Safety.
For safety purposes and for, you know, our service or emergency service workers, it probably is important, you know, to, to repair it and make it passable.
So Zach, if ZRA says that you can put a recommend, a non-recommendation on this, is that something that you would like to make a motion to do or what do we, we have to make either.
I mean, if we have to, yes, if DRA allows it, I would move that the select board not recommend the passage of this article. The act, actually that we, that we suggest that we do not improve this road.
I don't think so. Well, that's just.
Well, I, I have, I have made a motion that that's what I believe we should do.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I, I, I want to hear the motion again.
Right. Do we motion? Do we motion far or against it? Far against the article?
I am, I am.
Motions.
I am moving that we change this to say the board of selectmen does not recommend passage of this article.
Okay. So.
But how many don't, how many do?
We could stay neutral.
Yeah, I think that'd be.
Well, Ann is, Ann is telling us we have to either recommend it or not recommend it. So there is no neutrality.
Right. There's, you can't just.
So.
The, the DRA requires that you make a recommendation on it. And because the board put it on there, was my understanding that it was your recommendation to put it on there.
I still, I still think that a recommendation doesn't mean that we recommend it for, for it to pass. Or we recommend that it fail.
But it says recommend passage.
It does. Says recommended passage, just like everything else.
Yes. Okay.
Everything with financial value and others, you can do others as well, but.
Can we recommend that the voters decide?
Yeah, that's my preference, but and that's, that's.
I will make a call first thing tomorrow morning.
Yeah, my, my perception of that discussion was that, you know, we are trying to do like a cost savings, realizing that Joe doesn't have the budget and, you know, the money in his budget. And this is now the, the people that use that road or the, the, if that means value to the town, then they can vote by, you know, it's, I guess if we have to say one way or the other, that will, that may not be the case.
I will ask DRA in the morning there. Again, we've always known that there has to be a recommendation on a financial article. So I guess.
Do we vote on that recommendation now? Because what, if it's a, if it's a yay, then we do recommend it.
True.
Right. At which point it's a moot point. You don't even have to contact DRA.
Right.
If I'm, if I'm the only one who opposes this article, then whatever, it's just me.
Okay.
I would, I would second it, Zach, myself.
Okay. So Zach, you're not withdrawing and, and John seconds. Is there any discussion?
Well, I, I think that that road is really important to people in that section of town. And it's heavily traveled. And it would give us more public safety access. There are times when going up over Reservoir Hill can be pretty dangerous.
Yep. I've done that myself.
That hill is pretty dangerous at times. And Texas Hill can be next to impossible at times. So it, you know, it might be the only way in and out at, at times for public safety. So I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna vote against it. I was hoping to stay neutral, but I'm not gonna vote against it.
Okay. Thanks, Neil. Any other, any other discussion? And I, I gotta admit that, you know, I would probably be more in favor of this than, than voting against it. And I, I think because of the fact that it does affect public safety, we would look pretty lame to say, you know, let's vote this down. So, you know, I, I'd be concerned about taking a stance like that, but.
That's not the only way in there though.
No, but it's the quickest way.
It is the quickest.
It cuts, it cuts out like three miles or something like that. If you had to go.
Well, but couldn't, I mean, I, I wish the chief was here, but could, you, you can't come in through, what is that?
Free A.
Bell Road.
Yeah. Can't you come in through Bell Road?
That's got a really bad hill too.
Yeah, that's pretty bad.
How about Morse Road?
Well, that has to go.
Connects to Bell.
Yeah.
Sure, but it did avoids the steepest part.
It's really the, the slightest grade of all the roads that enter that area.
Bartlett is, yeah.
Yep.
It's a historical road too. It, it's really an old road.
That's the reason.
We don't care, we don't care enough about it to keep it up though.
Well, we've, we've done, we repaved that road in my history here. And but yeah, rocks keep on popping up and it needs, you know, culverts and, you know, so there's a lot of.
Yeah. I mean, this, this 125,000 is the first investment and it's going to be followed probably by, by three more or two or three more years of this, according to Joe.
Right.
Do it right. Yes.
So therefore though, any other discussion? Seeing none. Okay. Well, you got the Zach. Okay. So Mary Ann. Yep.
Nay. Nay to Zach's. Yeah.
Yep. I got it.
Thanks.
Neil?
Hey.
Zach?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And Bill. Ooh. Hey, I'm the critical vote. No.
Well, now you don't have to make a phone call, Ann. What's that?
I hope you still like me.
Oh, I, this, this is how the procedures work, right? We, we take a vote and we decide and we move together as a group. That's, that's.
I will still make a phone call in the morning, Zach, just in case, because I didn't have that answer for you. I'm sorry.
No problem.
So.
And you know a lot of things, but I don't expect you to know everything.
Well, thank you. So then we move on to article 15. And again, there's just some explanation. Article 16, 17, and 18. So as the board gets a chance, hopefully, if you haven't already, if you can just read through what we have highlighted, let us know if you want to add more information, if you think we have maybe too much information in there. Think about maybe the prior year's questions that we've been asked that you've hopefully been at the town meetings. Maybe some questions that you maybe still have. Hopefully we'll go into these public hearings. You won't have any questions. It's important that the board really knows what, you know, each, each thing that's going on. Department heads, as I understand it, will be zooming in. At least all those that are available for that Saturday afternoon. So that's, that was my presentation. I don't know if you guys have anything else you wanted to add or ask questions about.
Is the annual.
Good job, Ann. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Is the annual town report book coming out between now and that first virtual session?
No.
When do we?
It'll be out.
I mean.
It's supposed to be out the, the Monday before. What would, what would be the elections normally town meeting? So it's the week before that. So it's the 7th, 6th.
Voting is on the 9th, so it probably will be the first.
The first, yeah. Sorry.
So it'll be available that Monday after, Zach.
Okay, okay. I, I just know in, in past years, when I show up with questions, they're all. Okay, okay. I, I just know in, in past years, when I show up with questions, they're often based off what I read in that book, so.
But, but the town report will, because we do have a PDF file from the printer, we, it will be on the website.
Oh, fantastic, okay, that's great.
Access it, yeah.
Okay.
Um, Zach had talked about questions.
Yeah, I know, I was, I was gonna wait, if you wanted to bring it up, it's a little too late, Anne, you already mic'd it. So Zach, you had a question about the ability of people to ask questions during.
I do have a question about that, yeah, we, in the, in the write-up of the procedures that we had, we said that we, and I'll just read it here, we ask that you hold all of your questions and comments and submit your information as follows, no later than Thursday, March fourth, twenty twenty-one at noon, and then gives email, phone, and mail. Is there a particular reason that we're, we're not gonna allow any live comments at the, at the virtual hearing?
Again, we go back, we go back to during the discussions, that was something that was stated, that all questions would be held and the board would just get through the public hearings. At least the first public hearing. You know, if there's anything that you missed, you could always open it up if the board decides to do that. Um, probably either hearing, but that was a decision that was made way back when we started this process.
Yeah, I remember the discussion, but we're pretty clear on that, but do you see a benefit of doing that or?
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we see, you know, certainly the budget committee hearings we had this most recent time, we had the most active discussions in the first one and the most like community feedbacks of thinking about a, a two-part process. It, it feels to me like we would get the most, and actually, we had the same thing at the mask ordinance hearings we did last year. I thought we got some really good feedback verbally uh, from the community and, and even on the mask mandate, which was a pretty heated topic. We got some pretty good feedback, you know, on, on both sides of that issue, which then led us, I thought, to produce a better mask mandate than it, you know, if we had just done it in a vacuum. Now, of course, we are gonna get email, we're gonna get phone, we're gonna get mail from folks, but I don't know, that, that real-time discussion feels, feels to me like a, a more natural way to, you know, get feedback from the community to make, to make this as, as best as we can make it.
And prior town meetings, usually you don't let people who are non-residents speak without the authority of the, potentially, that would be a reason that you wouldn't, that you'd wanna really see who is speaking. Are they, you know, a registered voter of the town? And I'm just trying to think outside the box of why that was decided at that point.
And simply asking the person if they're from the town wouldn't count as enough?
Not if they're not a registered voter. It usually have to be a registered voter at town meeting. Because you're gonna vote.
Right.
This is a little different, we're again all out of our comfort zone. Um, so I don't know the reason that that was stated that way, except for when you submit your questions after that public hearing, we will have your name, your address, and Josie will be able to verify whether or not they're a registered voter.
That's a good point.
You know, and if they submit a question and they're not a registered voter, is it something that the board's willing to take? I don't know. I don't know.
So, so to Zach's question, when we did the mask mandate, would that normally be something we'd have to confirm whether they're registered voters?
No, because the mask mandate was done by the selectman. This isn't being run as part of your town meeting.
Okay.
It's, it's a little different.
Is the moderator at a town meeting not allowed to recognize a non-resident?
I think he usually asks the audience.
He usually asks the audience for the purpose of verbal voting?
You ask if there's any objections?
Right.
Oh, to, to an out-of-town person speaking?
Right.
Okay.
That would, yeah, if, if you want to pursue that, that'd be a Bob question, too, you know, whether or not you'd want to entertain that. Um, and Josie, I guess for that matter, I mean, theoretically, she could have a list.
She could, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see if that option is doable, to have live interaction.
And then if you'd have to repeat those questions on the second public hearing, because some people may not be able to make the first one, so they'll be at the second one. So you may have to repeat yourself then to make sure that everybody heard the same answer to the question that was asked.
Now, is that a typical thing in a normal town?
This is not, this is not typical at all.
Normal.
No, no, I get that, but it, it. So during the second meeting, during a normal one, would you, I'm just trying to compare, would you have to repeat the question?
Second meeting, Mary.
I see, okay.
This, we would just have that one evening and everybody in the room would hear the same question, they'd also hear the same answer.
So does that sound desirable to address questions at the first meeting and then make certain we repeat all those at the second meeting to make sure that everyone hears all the questions? Or should we limit the questions to the second meeting?
I'd like to know why. House Bill eleven twenty-nine says, after the first live virtual meeting is adjourned, questions and comments from the public shall be solicited and received via electronic mail, voicemail, text message, or other electronic means. So it came right from House Bill eleven twenty-nine.
Okay.
Yeah, that being said, House Bill eleven twenty-nine also says that governing bodies shall host a live virtual meeting information session during which the proposed optional town or school district meeting procedures shall be outlined and warrant articles discussed. And I think reading them is not discussing them.
That's kind of conflicting statement, then.
Yep.
Well, do you want to make a motion? To, well, yeah, if, if we're gonna be flying in the face of maybe our attorney's interpretation of that as well, it might be beneficial to
Okay.
check with him.
I, I mean, I would like us to see with, from our attorney, what's, what's allowed, but also to check with Bob, who's gonna have to moderate what he's comfortable with. I mean, that's my two cents. I personally think that an interactive informational session would be better in a situation where our town meeting's already gonna be a little bit crummier this year.
Crumier?
Crumier.
Is that a word?
It is now.
That's a word. All right, so we got Riley, and we got Bob, we got Josie.
We do.
Yep.
Guess that's how the cookie crumbles.
Oh, God.
So again, if there's any other suggestions that you want to add in here as a board, can you maybe either send an email to Kathy and myself so that we can make sure that this gets updated and the board has a fresh clean copy if needed for Saturday?
Yes, like, I mean, I'm seeking for myself.
Okay.
All right.
You've got twenty minutes.
Such a fool. Um, Scott. Scott Whedon, update on disaster recovery policy and data storage.
Yes, so I did have some time over the last couple of weeks uh, to speak with CCS with regards to where we are today and an opportunity to review the contract that we currently have with them. So the Plymouth server does have a daily off-site backup in case of a building disaster or malware attack that destroys the data or server or local backup drives. Recovery from offsite could take at least a few days, and when they say few days, in talking with Katie at CCS, that means five to seven days due to the time it takes to download the data, rebuild the server, and attach the workstations. So the new information that I was able to obtain from Katie when speaking with her is apparently we have a new server that's going in in twenty twenty-two. It will be set up as a virtual machine that replicates every fifteen minutes to the CCS data center and then replicated once a day to the cloud. In this case, the physical machi, if a physical machine is damaged, they can transfer replicated virtual machine to a new physical machine and have the town up and running in the same day. If the replicated server is damaged in any way, they have to restore it from the cloud and that backup could take three to five days to download the data from the cloud. But they would have some time, as a server should not have been totally, would have to be totally rebuilt. So something that I approached with them, and what do they currently do for other clients now, meaning town, city, schools that they work with, is they do have an option to put a full server disaster recovery plan in place before the new server goes in in twenty twenty-two. The full server backup would go to a physical onsite appliance that is then replicated to, in full, to the cloud every fifteen minutes and is immediately recoverable. There is a cost to this, of course, and the solution would run about a hundred dollars extra per month. But with that being said, it would be usable to remote machines in a co-location. So if something was to happen at the town office and the town office was inhabitable, and let's say they set up in the basement of the P's library, they could have the town up and running on remote machines within three to four hours. So it does take away the business continuity in the current plan that we have of five to seven days to get the town back up and running, and when I say the town, I mean the town office, back up and running, and under the new solution they have that will be coming out with the new server, it could take three to five days, whereas this upgrade that they could do right now would be upgradable immediately, they could put it in place, but it is a hundred dollars extra per month. So that was the information that I was able to obtain from CCS. Um, and talking with Steve at the police department, they do have a full replicated off-site data backup. They work with a company called Stella Networking out of Newington, New Hampshire, and they have a current contract with them. And speaking with Tom, the fire department stores in the cloud, they don't have, currently have a vendor that they work with, although Tommy is researching that after we had a conversation last week about how they replicate and store their data, both from a personal health information with what the ambulance does and how that information is stored. So Tommy is looking into that with a couple of different vendors, I think he'll be reaching out to Stella Networking because they do a lot of work with police, fire, and EMS. But that's where we are today with the information that I received. And we do have the opportunity to replicate immediately and be up and running the following day. But it's really up to what the board, how the board wants to move forward on this.
Scott, um, so when you say town office, do you mean, you know, what, what data were you talking about? Just, are you, are we talking about, we're not talking about vital records or whatever Josie's doing, right, or?
Yes, we're talking about all the vital records and all the data and backup that is located within the townhouse, the town clerk, the tax collector, the selectman's office, the business office, the planning office. Everything that's located in the townhouse is replicated currently on the server.
Good.
Scott, the town clerk actually does a lot of her work online through the state.
Right.
So they probably have some sort of.
Yeah, they got a hot site in Bermuda right now, I think, but I think last time I was saying we needed one, but when I was there, but, um, yeah, it's, uh, vital records data and safety data, you, you know, theoretically, like Josie wouldn't have much on hand. She's just accessing, uh, you know, those servers in the state, so.
Okay.
Is there any, um, you know, if you kind of combine everything and go through like a, like if Stella Network does all this for, you know, police, fire, EMS, do the, I mean, could we realize some savings if we kind of combined everything or what?
I would be happy to look into that, Bill, and, and get an estimate of what it would cost to combine everybody together.
Uh, does the, you know, Kathy, do you think that's a good idea or just? Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Scott, what does the police department do for their backup and everything?
They're all backed up through a company called Stella Net- Networking. Steve currently has a contract with them that backs up all the data to a physical off-site location that they can replicate overnight and have them back up and running the next day from a dispatch perspective, from a records perspective as well.
All right, thank you.
But I would be happy, Bill, to reach out and see what Stella Networking could do for the town in combining all departments together.
All right, that'd be, that'd be good, thanks.
Scott, Scott, did he give you a price by chance from the police department of how much they pay monthly or annually?
No, I did not get a price.
Okay.
We would probably have that information in town, wouldn't we?
You probably do, I just don't have it here with me, where he mentioned it was a hundred dollars a month for CCS.
I get that information from Steve as well, of what he's currently paying and what their contract looks like.
Okay. So what else you got, Scott?
Um, I don't know if you want me to do a COVID update or emergency management update now, or do you want to wait till the regular board meeting?
We got time to kill, but you, I mean, you'll be up against, or you probably be to participate with Don and Marlon, too, for that matter. Or, when, when is, are you on the, on the agenda or what?
He is.
Oh. Um, you want to give an update and not do your update at the meeting, or you're gonna do both?
I, I can do both, just to kind of give you a heads up where we are.
Yeah, that'd be great.
There, there, the existing emergency orders and executive orders are still in place. Emergency Order eighty-two is extended through March twenty-sixth, that's the one we spoke about last time. Executive Order twenty-one oh-two is the sixtieth extension of the state of emergency, which is extended through March fifth. The mask, um, emergency order number seventy-four is extended through March twenty-sixth. We did attend a, the Plymouth State University town meeting that they held um, on the seventeenth with regards to the uptick in cases, and I know that Marlon's going to give a really extensive update tonight, um, when he speaks. We've talked and, we've spoken a couple of times on the phone since then with regards to how they've increased beds and, and some of the protocol that they have in place. But I'll let Marlon speak to that because I think he does have a, a nice update tonight to provide. Um, I did speak to a couple establishments with regards to Safer at Home two point O, specifically the restaurant guidance and making sure they were reeducated in some of the things that were being reported as not following the mandate, and they did listen and said that they would do their best, and these were a couple establishments that were being attended um, pretty heavily by Plymouth State University students. So, um, we did speak with them, had a conversation, and I think they'll try to do better as we move forward. And then the only other thing is I've been working with Jane Hubbard on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and our goal is to start meeting sometime in the middle of April. Um, and our goal is to start meeting sometime in the middle of April to wrap up the mitigation plan by the first of Au, uh, first of August to be implemented September first, which meets the timeframe that was set forward by Homeland Security.
Excellent. Okay.
But as, as far as the restaurants, um, I've heard a couple where the, uh, cooks in the back aren't wearing masks. Is that a requirement?
It is if they can't socially distance, Mary Ann.
Okay.
And that is in the new restaurant guidance, and I mean, some of the things that were being reported, um, I would say that the public that was reporting them maybe didn't understand the full restaurant guidance. They were reporting that masks weren't being worn, but in the pictures that we saw, individuals were sitting at a table, there weren't more than six people at a table. With the exception of one table had seven at it, and they weren't wearing masks. So, you know, just reiterating the guidance, the restaurant guidance to them with regards to the cooks, the kitchen staff. If they can't social distance in the kitchen, they do need to wear masks, so. You know, and, and, you know, like we've told them is that, you know, if you just can't adhere to the guidance that we're trying to provide you, then we'll have to involve the Attorney General's Office. We're trying to give you a heads up and get you back on track and make sure you're doing the right things before we have to report it, and it goes above what we can do.
Any other questions, Scott? Maybe we lost, we lost Mary Ann. I guess she got annoyed by that answer. Supposedly she's.
He's there.
She's there.
Shut her video off.
Oh, and now she's going to get, get back at me after that crack. Okay. Anybody got some extra rooms that they can house, uh, positive COVID students? Guess not.
I think they're currently at a hundred and nineteen beds that, um, were available. They were able to secure forty additional beds at the end of last week um, by utilizing the Echo House, um, on the Main Street.
Wow.
Um, Landin Woods, a portion of the apartments there, um, for beds, and then there was one other location that I just don't have on the top of the head, but I'm sure uh, Marlon will, will provide that as well.
Are they going to do the Pilgrim Inn as well, too, or is that part of the deal already? Um, and they got the, um, the hotel across from, like, that one right up there.
Atala Lodge, the Atala Lodge and the Lodge in Ashland are at capacity with fourteen in isolation students.
Well.
Are you asking if they're going to use across the road, the Pilgrim Inn, too?
Yeah, I, I had heard the Pilgrim Inn, but I don't know how many rooms are, you know, that they actually have, but, uh.
Are they in any other towns, Scott?
I'm sorry.
Are they in any other town?
Not that I'm aware of, just Ashland and Plymouth right now.
You said Camden earlier, I didn't know.
Well, no, it's off campus, um, you know, you got Camden, Ashland.
Okay.
Romney, you know, you got. So they should be, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say roughly, if you look at it, take the outbreak, it's a hundred percent, twenty percent of the cases are off-campus housing.
Okay. Yeah, because the numbers in Camden and Ashland are minimal, you know? So either it's a reporting issue, or or it's, you said twenty percent are off, off-campus, so. Anyway, that'd be a question for Marlon and Don. Okay, um, anything that anybody would like to bring up for the next four minutes, five minutes?